All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody and call to order the Planning Commission regular meeting of April 7, 2025. This meeting is being held in a hybrid format that allows members of the public to participate in person and remotely via Zoom. In-person participants, if you would like to speak, please submit your request to speak from the forum clerk before your item is called. Only in-person participants may donate or accept donations of time. Remote participants, if you would like to speak, please join Zoom meeting, join the Zoom meeting printed in the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to comment on is called. Commissioners, when you have comments, please raise your hand, and I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call?
Commissioner Caymans?
Here.
Commissioner Massa?
Here.
Commissioner Riddick?
Here.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Here.
Chair Peake?
In the flesh.
You have a quorum.
After the recording secretary calls the roll and confirms the quorum as president, I would like to very kindly request that Mr. Hans Letts leads us all in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as staff recommends with item 4A continued to 4/21/24 and item 5C continued to a date uncertain.
I'm sorry, I don't think 4A is, yeah.
We were actually continuing item number 5A?
Oh, I'm sorry.
To the April 21, 2025 Regular Planning Commission Meeting.
Right. I correct my motion.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 May I please have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on, sorry, March 28, 2025, and the amended agenda was properly posted on April 3, 2025.
All right, so we're going to go ahead and I am going, or we are going to administer the oath of office for our newest member to the Malibu Planning Commission. Welcome. And I will let, you're going to go down and you're going to meet Rebecca at the podium.
Hi. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Marnie Caymans.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will diligently serve as Commissioner?
That I will diligently serve as Commissioner?
Of the Planning Commission of the City of Malibu?
Of the Planning Commission of the City of Malibu.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
To the Constitution of the State of California?
To the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion?
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
And that I will well and faithfully?
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter?
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And welcome, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
So we're now at the time for public speakers. We will begin with Mr. Haney. Norm.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. I brought this subject up to the city council, and I'm bringing it up to you. You may not have the ability to make a decision, but to the extent that you have any influence on the people that appointed you, you might use that influence. I'm talking about the communications tower that is immediately adjacent to the Santa Monica College area. It was built illegally. It is higher than it's supposed to be, and if you look at the colors that were actually approved, it was not red and white striped all the way to the top. It is ugly, it is terrible, and I was told that it's not necessary to be there. It could actually be moved behind the college and to the, to the, to the east, and it would still be, meet all the requirements of communication. This thing has been there for approximately two years, and it really is ugly. So that's my comment. I think if it was the private sector that built it, it would be torn down now. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Norm. Do we have any speakers on Zoom?
One raised hand from Joe Drummond.
Joe, can you hear us?
Hi, thank you Chair Peake, and welcome to Marnie Cayman, Caymans. I'm very happy to have another woman on the Planning Commission, a layperson and someone who will stand for the mission and vision statement of Malibu and, and is there since we cannot be there with our house. Our houses just burned down, and I'm sure she will do a great job with the rebuilds that you're voting on today as well as everything in the future. And I just want to comment that I agree with Norm that that, that tower is an eyesore, and the county was supposed to come back only a few months later, and it's been almost a year. And they should come back and the tower should be moved behind and shortened, and none of those three tiers of, for additional, additional telecommunications to lease from them. They're not supposed to be profiting from this, this, this eyesore, basically. So thank you for your service, everyone. Bye.
Thank you, Joe. All righty, so Commissioners, do we have any comments? John, go ahead. Let's try to keep it timely.
Oh, I have only... There is no topic on public comment. Norm, exactly, and on April 17 of this year, we're going to have a hearing on that tower, which is exactly two years from when we had the last hearing where we asked the county to come back to us with a redesign, exactly to the day. So that shows you how fast things happen. Also in those minutes, let's see, the minutes are for April 17, 2023, unless they're mislabeled. Okay, it's item five, it's item 5A, or it's item, whatever item that minutes are. Also, at that same meeting, we had a hearing on West Sea Level Drive, which is going to be appealed to the city council at the next, or was appealed last meeting, the city council, and rejected, and coming back to us. So that's two years for that project. So my only point is, shouldn't take two years for either one of them to come back to us. And that's it.
Thank you, John. Any comments? Have any comments? No comments?
I want to welcome Marnie.
Welcome, Marnie. And Marnie, do we have an update on anything?
We do.
Thank you.
We have pretty slumps. So first of all, what we're going to be doing is providing you this very simple update. We're going to align it with the Malibu Rebuilds newsletter. The reason for that is that dates are changing, statistics change constantly, and what I do in this room will be supersede unless we all get onto the same page. So last we spoke to you, we had six pending and two approvals for planning verifications. We're now up to four approved and six pending. So we've actually grown a little bit. Next time I see you in two weeks, you're going to notice a big jump in some good news. Nothing yet for Plan Check, which is the phase beyond to get a permit to rebuild, and obviously nothing is rebuilt, so no certificates of occupancy. Rebuild Center continues to be wonderful in terms of success. We're getting very, very positive feedback because we have a team, dedicated fire rebuild teams, from all of the various disciplines in the city, public works, EST, as well as planning. We've already taken reviews of 150, 155 properties there, and 12 have come back with more developed plans for a second go. So if you haven't gone to the website or to the center, please do get early information. It'll help you down the line. I also wanted to quickly give an update on our public records requests. That's an indication of who's out there in the wings looking for information, either for insurance companies or for design and rebuild purposes. Two weeks ago, we had 378 public records requests for fire information. We've grown by 40 two weeks later. We also had, last count, two weeks ago, 143 of those records completed. We're now up to 248 completed. So we're doing about 50 a week getting those out, and that's because we brought on some additional help to go through all those old plans, old drawings, old files, and find things from the city's history. Next slide. Wanted to let you know that we were scheduled by the postal commission. It will be this coming Thursday up in Santa Barbara. It's item 10B. They consider these to be minor amendments to the LCPs, the fire rebuild components. Tyler will be there at the meeting, and we're anxious to get a text from him saying all has gone well. Next slide. There's a business survey that closes tomorrow. Please look at it. Please give us information that we can use to start to develop a program specific to our business community. So many ideas coming forward, Council, and I appreciate it, everyone who came out at the last council meeting to help us understand how serious that road closure and downturn in businesses. So this closes tomorrow. Next slide. We continue to have recovery and rebuild events. Tomorrow will be Carbon Canyon, Carbon Nation, Carbon Beach Terrace, starting at 4:00 PM. These are for not only property owners, but also design professionals. A week later, on the 15th, we'll be taking a look at Beachfront Properties again. And then a week after that, we'll be taking a look at the Brock Franklin and Willsley Fire Code amendments. So these are the group that lost out the first time around because the postal commission did not consider de minimis waivers as they're doing now. So we'll be revisiting those communities. Next slide, and last slide, two additional dates. This Monday, the city council will consider a fire rebuild waiver program similar to what happened for Willsley Fire. what happened for Woolsey Fire. If you have your thoughts, your ideas, considerations, please get them to the Council. And then finally, some good news was that the removal extension has been moved to April 15th. If you know of anyone who's still hesitant, we do have a table here at City Hall. There are envisions for the Army Corps. They're willing to take a call to anything they can to help you to make a decision. That concludes my short presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Just one kind of comment on that. I know that, I didn't say this earlier, but I've seen, heard a lot of things from businesses. I know probably everybody up here has. Hopefully, people are shopping locally and supporting the local businesses that are out here. That's it. Kellen.
I just want to add some numbers. It's always good to hear positive data. Last time, I think, on the rebuild, we have the, we're focusing on the PCH properties, owners who are missing and have not opted in or out of the rebuild cleanups, the Phase Two with that April 15th deadline. Right before April 1st, there were about 100, 110 that were still missing. We're down to 39. So, staff has been working very hard, along with working with the county, to reach out to these folks in any way possible. I think they're doing, you know, carrier pigeons and airplane banners and stuff, so, but that still means there's 39 people that we could be getting the federal government to help and pay for some of that cleanup, so if you know those people. And again, that's 39 along the PCH. There's a similar number that are not PCH properties that are as important, but we focus on the beachfront just because there is a little bit more urgency in terms of being on the ocean.
Question? John, hold on. Kellen, thank you very much for that, and I appreciate, just wanted to start by saying to Maureen Tyler and everybody sitting over there, again, thank you from all of us for continuing to work around the clock to help all of our residents that are affected by this. Thank you very much. Drew.
Drew raised his hand first. Yeah, I was just going to say thank you to everyone, and, you know, now that the dust is finally starting to settle and healing's starting, that one thing that's starting to become clear to me is, we've been kind of going through this cycle now for over six years. I really, really suggest everyone be proactive and get to the rebuild center and try to get your project started as quickly as possible. Right now, there's a tremendous amount of goodwill. We had this after Woolsey also, and that goodwill does wane over time, and rebuilding will get harder, and I suggest everyone try to get going as fast as possible. I, thank you.
John?
Yeah, Kellen, I, I seem to remember reading in the, in the paper this week that the feds had declared that they were going to clean all the lots without permission on the highway, and they, they don't need the approvals anymore.
I don't know which article that was. If you send it to me, I'll happily look at it and give more information. There's a lot of back and forth that we're still doing in the background with not just the feds, but the county. I wouldn't say that the feds can just go in and do that as, as a blanket statement or something that, you know, would be, would be preferable, but I can't comment on exactly what, what you read.
I would, I would just add that I think the, both sides of that is, the feds, the state, our city, everybody else involved knows how important that environment is and everything that's on the coastline down there, and they are going to continue to work around the clock together and use whatever means necessary to get that cleaned up as effectively as possible and as safely as possible. And hopefully, those are the things that residents hear from that, and that they work with all of our partners to get that done in the most timely manner possible, because we cannot be able to rebuild our city until those things are dealt with and that that highway is safe and everything else. And that's going to get us all back to a better place. It's a very nice thing to look up at the mountains and see some of the green sprouts coming through, a lot of the ash and other stuff that's up there. And there's a nice fun south swell on the way, so things are getting better. All right. Any other comments before we get on to consent and everything else? Okay. Sorry for talking a little too much right there. I don't...
I'd like to pull 3B1.
Okay. Um, that's fine. Anybody want to pull anything else on consent? Nope? All right, I will second that, so make a, everybody good with that?
Yep.
Okay, so, you need a roll call or no?
I believe the other items agendized can be approved by consent.
Okay, so we'll go ahead with 3B1. Now, 3B1 is de minimis waiver number 24-005, an application for widening of the existing driveway for a Woolsey effective parcel. John, did you have some specific questions on this?
Yes, they're mainly with Kellen.
For Kellen or for Tyler? Because we have a staff report available if we need it. Do you want to go through that?
Mainly, mainly with Kellen. We got a letter yesterday, maybe today, from a interested party asking for a delay in, in the title, for a title search. It was an attorney for the neighbor, and, so, but this is a de minimis waiver, so I don't know how you handle that. But, in the staff report, it says that this is, is not locally appealable, and I'm wondering why Section 1704-220 says any determina, and Paragraph A says any determination by the planning director is appealable for 10 days from the date of signing. So, I would think that this interested party has three more days to appeal. And I, the reason I bring this up is, I'd rather not have appeals and have this worked out ahead of time.
So, I think we can assuage that fear. We have a, an added condition that we've discussed prior to this that I think addresses this in full, so I don't know if we need a staff report, if we want to just go to that, but, yep.
Do we have, is the applicant here? No, no, nobody, nobody's here, nobody's here on Zoom? No, okay, so...
Yeah, I don't need a staff report.
Okay, so, Kellen or Tyler, can you guys just cut to the chase on this with what you guys think to have worked out?
Yeah, so, that, the neighbor's attorney sent us a letter, the neighbor to the north, and they basically just wanted to make sure that the driveway improvements did not go north of the turnout onto the primary property, which is 33955, the subject property. And so, we just proposed to add this condition, and we can reissue the de minimis waiver since it was already issued, that the driveway widening approved under this permit must stop at the turnout onto 33955 Pacific Coast Highway, to address their concern.
So, that reissues the permit, and we hear it at the next meeting?
In this case, we would simply, we would simply issue a revised notice of decision of the planning director, would not require re-reporting to the Planning Commission.
But it would have a change of approval date, wouldn't it?
No, it would simply, it would be the same approval date with a minor revision noted on it, and it would be stated that the decision had been revised.
Okay, so, my, my last question is, that's an error in the staff report that says it's not locally appealable?
No, the decision by the director is not appealable, but if the Planning Commission chooses to find a fault with the de minimis waiver, or the application of the de minimis waiver on this project, the Planning Commission has authority to...
Hear it.
Basically pull it, like you would in ACDP.
Well, what I'm wondering is, why, why does 1704-220 give 10 days to appeal? Because I was always under the impression, the reason I looked this up is, I was always under the impression that any, any decision by the planning director was appealable for 10 days.
If it's an administrative approval, like if it's an administrative coastal development permit, that could be requested to be a full hearing, but an APR, for example, is, isn't appealable. It's a, you get a request for review within 10 days, but it's, it's almost a second judgment by the planning director.
Any person aggrieved by a decision or any portion of the decision made by the director under the provisions of the title in, in connection with the site plan review, blah, 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 blah.
Which project are you talking about, Commissioner?
I'm looking at 17.04.220.
You're talking about the, the municipal code?
Yeah.
Appeal of action.
I think you're citing, if I just heard you correctly, you're citing the site plan review chapter, right, which, which would be appealable. A site plan review is a director-level decision, but it is appealable to the Planning Commission.
Well, it, it says site plan review, variance, string line modification, conditional use permit, reasonable accommodation request...
Right.
Determination of permitted use, which I assume this would be. Sign permit, cultural resources review, highway dedication or improvement, or temporary use permit application.
This is a de minimis waiver. It's, I think it's Chapter 13.27 of the LIP.
Right, and de minimis waiver is not one of the items listed on the appeals section that you're citing.
Can I make a motion to approve item 3B1?
Could I please just inform the commission that we do now have a raised hand for this item in the Zoom meeting? It's up to you whether you choose to open it.
Okay, let's go ahead and open the public hearing and hear from them.
Solomon?
Solomon, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
You've got three minutes, go ahead.
Hi, so I'm the general contractor on this project for 33955, representing the owner. I contacted the neighbor almost a year ago, left him several messages, sent him the plans like six months ago regarding the widening of the driveway to first try to obtain his permission or at least consent on it, and at that time, he said he would get back to us. He ignored it, never responded, and then only now sent a letter in this morning to try to postpone the hearing. The other sort of concern that I have with maybe that added language is that this is a widening for the fire department, and I just want to remind the commission that this is a Woolsey fire rebuild, where this homeowner has been trying to obtain his permits for the last, you know, going on six and a half years to rebuild his home, but the fire department is requiring the widening of the existing driveway. They gave an exception to 16 feet as opposed to the 20 feet that they really wanted because of the issues there, but when we widen it, if we stop where the driveway turns, we may not be able to transition the grade for the benefit of the homeowner at 33961 who's actually complaining, and so we need to be able to taper it off so he doesn't have a steep drop down when we widen the driveway. So, it's sort of, that added language would hurt him more because his access would get harder. One of the reasons why it goes up a little further is to sort of taper the angle so that it could be feathered in. The, the last thing that I'd like to just sort of make a point on is that there's a current case law in the, that was through the Court of Appeals cases B226675, Flora Dolnikov versus Dickren Akizian, and in that, it was the same set of facts here, where the Court of Appeal held that the neighbor didn't need permission from the other neighbor in order to improve his access through an existing easement.
All right, Saul, is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, our planner has a question for you real quick. His name is Tyler.
Hi, Saul, I just had a question. So, does the, the part that goes past the turnout onto 33955, is that needed for 33955? 33955, in other words, sometimes the fire department requires a turnaround, and so do you need that extra portion north of the turnout onto your property to, for the fire department requirements?
So, the fire department, the plan they approved, this is what they wanted. They have it going up a little bit because it creates sort of a little bit of a T, but it's more so so that we could appease the fire department by creating the slow percentages that they need for 33955 to be able to access and for them to be able to turn around, but the part that continues up a little bit further, our intention is just to be able to smooth the transition so that the existing driveway and access for 33961 actually gets better, so it's to his benefit that we don't just cut it off right there. It's still below his entry gate into his property, but that we could taper it off and, you know, we certainly wouldn't go any higher than we need to because it's a waste of money for 33955. They just want to be able to turn in, but part of, so if you look at this picture that you have now, coming from PCH, you go up this red driveway. The first turnout to the right, which is like three quarters of the way up, is the access for 33955. Where it continues up, it's still on a hill going up to 33961, and so if we just do the access and turn into 33955, and we don't have the ability to taper it off, he's going to have maybe, you know, a two to three foot drop off as he's driving down the driveway. And so, we certainly don't want to cut off his access. We actually want to make the access better.
So, you're saying because you're not making the grade uniform, basically at that cut point, it'll just get more steep, and it'll be like a, like, kind of like a kink in the road, right?
Is that something that the, the permit department handles?
Well, what he's saying makes sense. I mean, the fire department wants a certain grade in order to meet their requirements. You know, thinking about this now with that testimony, I don't know, Maureen, what you think, but I don't want to, I'd be hard pressed to, you know, require someone to do something against fire department requirements in case now, we're now taking it out of compliance.
Let me ask you this, Tyler. I understand exactly the conflict that's in there. It seems to me like the smartest thing is to build it the way that the fire department wanted it. Am I missing something there or no?
I would agree. What do you think, Maureen?
Question? Is that what the fire department wanted, or is it what is practical?
That's what the fire department approved. We'd have to go back and request if there's an alternative that the fire department would explore, which would delay this project.
I think for, I think for us, the question is, one, do you want to delay it more? Are we really achieving much? And two...
No, I just wonder if it's legal to do that, and, I mean, I was mainly after the fact that it appeared to me that you have three more days, and we had a complaint, and if you have a lawsuit, then we got us an appeal and all kinds of craziness and just trying to move things along.
John?
It's, it's not appealable, but two, the way I believe it's currently drafted is, it's only to the extent it goes to where the fire department needs and not beyond, so that's, that's as approved.
That's not what he's asking for. They only need to go to his house.
Okay.
The fire department has said they need to go beyond the driveway to the house a little bit to achieve the grade and the feathering and not have it be an abrupt change.
I mean, I just want to say one thing. Okay. If we're looking at this project and we're sitting up here as a commission, we see the way it's proposed, and we've heard from the architect, if we look at the circumference of the project in front of us, it's a benefit to the property at 33961, and all of the safety mechanisms are in place for 33955. So, what we have before us is, in front of the commission is the best option, and I... And I would move to take a vote on it.
Well, I just want to comment on that as, on de minimis waivers, we don't make those decisions, whether it's better or not, it's whether it's legal. So it's not a hearing, in other words. We cannot hear this.
So in this case, the commission's discretion would be to receive and file the planning director's report on the issuance as is without the added condition of approval that was just right into the record is what my understanding is, the current recommendation from our director and our case planner.
All right, I would like to make a motion to receive and file as recommended. Have a second.
I'll second it.
Do we want a roll call or do you guys want all in favor?
What does receive and file mean?
It's something that we don't have to do a formal roll call on because it's on the consent calendar.
A consent calendar item doesn't get a public hearing, so it is up to the commission as to whether you believe what was done was proper or handled, processed properly. If so, you receive and file it, you've been given the information and you've accepted it is what that means, basically.
Okay, I'd like a roll call because I want to abstain.
I'm fine with that. Let's go ahead with the roll call.
Commissioner Kamens? Here. In this case, you're going to say yes or no and whether or not you would like to receive and file item number 3B1. Commissioner Mazza?
I'm staying.
Commissioner Riddick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Chair Peet?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. It's always nice when we have somebody new and we're going to bring them up to speed and she's going to learn, and that's part of this process. So don't feel like, you know, like if there's something that doesn't feel right or anything, like you can ask a question at any time and I and our staff here are here to help you with that. So that's totally, totally cool. We are now on four. I forget, one of them just got, shifted one of these. What did we move? We moved 5A, right? So we're now on 4A? All right, so 4A. Coastal development permit number 24-048 and conditional use permit 24-009, an application for a new emergency communications facility at Bluffs Park to be utilized by the city in times of emergency as a follow-up to emergency coastal development permit number 24-024, including conditional use permit to allow the use on a property zone, public open space, which was continued from March 17th. Any disclosures? None?
None.
None.
All right, staff report.
Thank you, Chair Peet, members of the planning commission. As mentioned, this item is a new, for a new emergency communication facility located at Malibu Bluffs Park, that's 24250 Pacific Coast Highway, is a coastal development permit application and a conditional use permit application for the use on an open space lot. Just some background on how we got to this point on this project. In December 9th, 2024, the application was actually submitted before this, the original CDP application. But on December 9th, 2024, the Franklin Fire broke out. And then on December 16th, 2024, the city council ratified the proclamation of the state of emergency from the city manager for the Franklin Fire. And then on December 17th, just one day later, the city issued emergency coastal development permit number 24-024 for the temporary construction of this emergency communication facility. So if you went out to the site, you may have noticed that it's already under construction and that was permitted under this emergency permit due to upcoming Santa Ana winds at the time. And then on January 7th, 2025, the Palisades Fire broke out. As mentioned before, this application is for coastal development permit for the construction of a 28-foot tall emergency communication facility. It's a follow-up as required by the Malibu LIP for emergency coastal development permit number 24-024. The project also requires a conditional use permit number 24-009 for the use of the emergency communication facility within the public open space zoning district. This project is located on the city-owned developed portion of Malibu Bluffs Park. On this portion, you'll see ball fields, parking areas, the skate park, and it's tucked away in the southeast corner of the, of the lot, on the city-owned portion of the lot, next to an existing city building. In those orange areas there is state-owned part of the park. It's, it was environmentally sensitive habitat area, it still is, but it was heavily burned in the broad fire. And then I've mapped approximately where the top of bluff is, is generally, and that's basically co-aligns with the edge of the public accessway and the environmentally sensitive Project plans here, our public works department with Kimberly Horn developed these plans and they are also, our public works department is also here to answer any questions you may have. 28 feet tall that will help the KBUU radio station broadcast in times of emergency to wider portions of the city to help with emergency communication responses throughout the city. So as I mentioned, under the emergency coastal development permit, this project has been partially installed. And so we were able to take some photos of existing conditions as they are today, or as of last week, anyway. The pole here kind of looks like a flagpole. And on the right is some of the equipment that is used to facilitate the pole and the emergency communication facility. And all this equipment and the pole itself is conditioned to be painted a color that blends in with the surrounding environment to meet the LIP requirements. Here's a different view from Winter Mesa Drive, looking south. You can see the horizon line of the Pacific Ocean and just some impacts that may be from the pole. It's tucked away in the southeastern corner, as I mentioned, and so a lot of, from most of the park, kind of the more accessible portions of the park, you can't really see it too well because of grade changes and some of the existing development on site. Here's one more. If you're on the trail at the, at the top of the bluff there, looking eastward, and you could see the case development under construction, you could see that yellow foul pole from the ball field, and then you can see the proposed emergency communication facility in that mix. So with that, our recommendation, staff recommendation is determined that the project is exempt from CEQA and adopt the resolution 2534 before you tonight. And we're available for any questions.
We have a couple of speakers, Hans Letz, followed by Don Schmitz. And just, I totally forgot that I met last week with some of our public works and Hans up there at the site, just to kind of provide them some guidance. They had a couple of power-related questions. I will not be working on the project at all. It was more just to see how they would get power to this if they need it. And that's it. Hans, you have four minutes, or you have 16 minutes, but I think you have 15. You're the applicant. I don't think you're going to need it.
Thank you. I don't intend to go more than four.
I'm sorry, I don't believe, is Hans the applicant? The city of Malibu is the applicant for this item?
I apologize. Hans, you have four minutes.
So his time would be at three minutes?
Plus one, he's got Donna, a minute for Donna.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Sorry, Rebecca.
Kind of a weird project. I apologize for the, this actually began in 1999 when the city of Malibu asked me to start a radio station because we'd had a fire and we couldn't get emergency information out. It has been a, to say it's a struggle is beyond description, and the city staff has been extremely helpful and to their credit, picked up the ball when we found we couldn't go any further. We can't apply for something on land that we don't own, and the city owns this land. That's why the city is the applicant. And the, the city has graciously assisted us in getting this up. The night of the fire, the Palisades Fire, we were on the air. I was on the air, my wife was on the air, Channel 5 was on the air, on the, on the audio. For, for 45 hours straight, almost two days straight, we were giving people emergency information that they needed in eastern Malibu. We were telling people where the fire was and what was going to happen in the next few hours, specific to Malibu. People who could hear us got that information. Malibu's power was out, so people couldn't stream us. There were people listening to us on transistor radios, but we don't come in east of Bluffs Park. This will not only, this facility will not only allow us to transmit east of Bluffs Park, but it'll also fill in the areas that are blocked by the cliffs west of Bluffs Park, which will allow the FM signal to be picked up all the way to Point Doom in places. Right now on Doom Drive, you can't pick us up because there's a big, strong Riverside Station on top of us. So this is an unusual thing. We designed this to be as visually inconspicuous as possible. Radio needs to be up in the air to work. I'm not sure how well this one will work as low as it is. We're going to give it a try. And we're only allowed to transmit with five watts of power. So it'll be, in essence, a light bulb. And it won't be putting out any electromagnetic radiation other than on 99.1 FM with the power of a light bulb. So I'm here if you have any questions and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Hans. Any speakers on Zoom?
There's one raised hand from Joe Drummond.
Joe, what do you got?
Well, I just, I want you guys to support this. Obviously, eastern Malibu needed this like years ago, and the design is excellent as compared to the county's antenna tower. Maybe you should even put a condition that if it requires like a six or nine-foot antenna on top of it to, to get the signal, then that can be an option without having to go through all this again. But it's, I mean, it's definitely something that needs to be approved ASAP. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're back up here. John, go ahead.
Hans, if you could come up. I didn't get a chance to read your letter because we just got it, but you, you mentioned on the first page that it's yet to be determined how we get internet service for this use. When there's no power, there's no internet. So-
No, we'll have-
What, what would you use the internet for?
Chairman, Chairman Peet, Mr. Mazza, the facility will have a 10 to 12-hour battery in it. And like with our other two transmitters that exist now, those stay on the air in times of power outage, give us enough time to run over there with a small generator like at a traffic light and plug it in. So the internet, the internet sources we're going to be using will either be a flat Starlink antenna, which will be in the city's equipment yard, or not visible to the public from outside it, or a different type of wireless that we're investigating with T-Mobile right now, which is the size of this that sits in the cabinet. And it will be on battery and it will function during power outage.
So you're getting, you're rebroadcasting through the internet on this. You're not, it's not coming from another tower of yours?
Correct. We don't have a signal there.
Okay. And this is a CUP. Do you have a contract with the city now to operate it?
Yes, we do. We have a formal agreement between us and the city.
Okay.
It's a memorandum of understanding, to be clear.
Okay, so at some point, they need to-
They have an MOU in place, and when I met there with Public Works and the city, this is made to make our residents safer. That's the point of it. That's what it's for and that's what it's going to do.
No, I'm just wondering how that functions. Usually you have, when you rent, when you have city facilities, you do a rental agreement.
Yes, we give the city free public service announcements and we give the city complete access. They have a switch they can throw and take over the-
I got that. I was just trying to go through how it worked and how it was all-
Sure.
Done. Okay, that's my questions.
Go ahead.
So I agree with Joe. Is it possible, and this is a question for staff, if, if we needed an extension and we weren't getting reception with the current height, could we put a condition to allow that at this juncture?
Yes, I'd actually be very specific because this is the issue with the other tower, is that there was no additional-
I would advise that we don't do that right now and that we make it very certain that this works the way that it works.
I would also second that because we don't have a design for an extra-
John, John, hold on. The, the reason for that is that views and things are very important with Malibu, and we've seen how it's become so sensitive with another antenna. I think it would be foolish for us to do that without having a different hearing. But if Hans is confident that it's going to work the way that it is, right, that's what we should function with. I'm going to ask him a question about it in a second, but I think the point that is being made is that we have, you know, a house with Malibu has a lot of issues with height and views. And they're trying to do this in a manner that has the least amount of impact that gives us the most amount of functionability. If we really wanted to make that work, we as a city could go and pay to rent space at Catalina, broadcast it back here, gets really expensive, and we would all be able to hear it. But that's not where we're at right now. We also need the local ones, too. Hans?
Thank you for the suggestion, but that would not work. And what we plan to do is, once we get this on the air and see how it performs, which is a big question mark, we don't know. That station that we're battling in Riverside is 68,000 watts, and we don't know how this will perform at Dukes versus that. If this goes on the air and works as we think it will, we will still lose signal east of Dukes. We don't like that. The solution would be for us to go to the FCC and propose to put in another 28-foot tower at Dukes to extend our signal further east. We also have long-range plans to do that at Station 99 at the western end of Malibu to extend our signal further out to Leo Correo. So height would be great, but we'll never be higher than this. It would never be necessary. Thank you for asking.
True. I just wanted to say during the Palisades Fire, you were my number one source for information.
Thank you.
And, you know, it was, you were a constant, and thank you.
Thank you.
Maureen?
Just to clarify, if somebody has a little transistor radio that's maybe rechargeable or battery-powered, that would work without internet? It doesn't matter.
Yes, and in point of fact, during the power outages at the Palisades Fire, there were people out in their driveways listening to us on their car radios.
So perhaps the city can give out, like little cheap radios with your station on it and say, in an emergency, we have this.
Not only that, we are in development right now with a company that is going to sell the city radios that can do that, but also these radios will turn on automatically when the city throws a switch. And we'll, we'll give you an alphanumeric message like a pager that says, seek shelter or tsunami or whatever. And people can then tune the radio to KNX, to us, to whatever they want to. It's not going to promote KBUU, but this emergency signal called Alert FM will sit on the KBUU signal and use us to wake up these radios across town.
Great.
The city council is working on that right now.
Yeah, I was going to say after Woolsey, I don't know if it was FEMA, but someone handed out little crank radios that, was it Sidney Malgood that did that? Yeah, I have one of those radios actually that I use.
Yeah, sadly, those radios were designed to work with the National Weather Service transmitter, which has been off the air for three months. The Point Doom radio has not been fixed because of Dozier, the National Weather Service or something, who knows?
All right. The public hearing is now closed. Hans, thank you so much.
I make a motion, we approve item 4A.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In, in this case, I would like to take a formal roll call because we are adopting a resolution. So Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Kamens?
Yes.
Commissioner Riddick?
Yes.
Chair Peet?
Yes, and Hans-
Motion carries.
Thank you for helping make our community safer.
Thank you very much.
So we're continuing 5A and we're now on 5B. Coastal development permit, Woolsey Fire number 21-008, variance number 21-025 and variance number 22-025, an application for construction of a new container pool and new driveway and associated retaining walls for Woolsey Fire affected parcel at 6215 Kane and Doom Road.
Sorry for seeing so much of me tonight.
Tyler, we like you.
Akash Shah is the-
Akash Shah is the case planner. I'm presenting on his behalf. Thanks, Chair P, appreciate that. And hello again, members of the Planning Commission. Coastal Development Permit Number 21008 and a couple of variances, as mentioned, one for development on steep slopes and a variance request for retaining wall height more than six feet located at 6215 Cannon Doom Road. Here's an aerial map. So Cannon Doom Road, this portion is a public, a public street, and turning off to this triangle parcel, which is 6215 Cannon Doom Road, with a mapped blue line stream just to the west of this property. Some previous approvals on this site, a planning, the house was destroyed in the 2018 Woolsey Fire, so a planning verification was approved in October 2019 for an in-kind, like-for-like rebuild of the single-family residence with an attached garage. And in June of 2021, a de minimis waiver was approved for the installation of the replacement onsite wastewater treatment system. The application is for a new container pool and associated pool equipment, a new fire department required access driveway, 695 cubic yards of non-exempt grading, new hardscape around the pool and driveway areas, retaining walls, as mentioned, above six feet, the required six feet in height, up to a little over 18 feet in height, and a vehicular entry gate that does meet the code up to six feet in height. The project applicant is requesting a variance for construction on slopes deeper than two and a half to one, and a second variance for construction of the retaining walls greater than six feet. So here's a site plan of the, of the property. The old driveway was a little further north along Cannon Doom Road, and that existing driveway was determined to not be acceptable by the Los Angeles County Fire Department. And so the applicant has designed a fire department approvable driveway that is further south along Cannon Doom Road than the previous driveway. It meets the topography requirements, the grade that we mentioned in the last DMW earlier. And it also requires development on some of the steeper slopes of the property and retaining walls greater than six feet in height. There's also a new pool being requested, one for use, but also as a firefighting apparatus to help in case there's a future fire. The project, as mentioned, site to the west, in this case, it's below because of the way the site plan's oriented, there's a mapped blue line stream, and all of the development meets the 100-foot buffer from the environmentally sensitive habitat. Here's a color-coded slope analysis, just showing the steep slopes that are involved. The brown there where this driveway and retaining walls are going are steeper than two and a half to one, but less than one to one. Here's a site section of the retaining walls, a little over 18 feet in height. The property descends from Cannon Doom Road, so the majority of the larger portions of the wall should not be visible from Cannon Doom. Here's another section of the pool, is essentially on grade, and the, there's like an infinity edge on the west, on the west side of the property. So with that, the Planning Department recommends approval of the project, and we're available for any questions.
Okay. Tyler, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and do disclosures, starting at the end.
No disclosures on this one.
I, I sent an email to Akash and Tyler asking the outline of the, the size of the prior house, the outline of the, the placement of the prior house, and whether the pool was new or replacement. And I got an answer back, it was approximately 4,200 square foot house. The, the outline of the house was slightly different, and the pool was new.
Okay. Marnie?
No disclosure.
All right. Drew?
I went by the site last week and met with the applicant. Commissioner came in, so, yeah, you have, happened to be there when I was there, so she got a tour of the, of the property at the same time as I did.
Awesome. I did not visit the property, but I've driven past it for many, many years. All right, so we have, is it DNA Moore or Dina Moore? I hadn't thought so. All right, you have three minutes or?
Fifteen.
Fifteen minutes. Okay, you want to reserve any time for rebuttal or no?
I, I, do I have to?
You do not have to, but usually people will reserve like five minutes or something, or maybe you don't even need that much time.
I only need four minutes, and we have our biologist online, I believe, who's going to make a statement, so I don't know how long.
So if he's part of your team, he'll be taking up some of your time, which is no problem?
Yeah, I just don't know how much.
And could you, could you identify that person's name and let him know that he should raise, he or she should raise their hand in the virtual meeting?
Leslie Lazarati.
Thank you.
I hope I said her name right. I hope she has her hand up. And she did confirm with me that she's online. Okay, and I, I gave some pictures to Parker to post. This only format, oh, he's already put it up. All right. Thank you, Tyler, for being here and presenting that. Hello again, commissioners. I'm Dina Moore, the applicant, along with my husband Mike, who had to be away for work training, but he's here via Zoom. Our builder and private biologist are also on Zoom. They'll answer any questions on the scope of the work, and I believe our biologist will also present her work in a statement. Other than that, it's just me here. We don't have any expeditors or attorneys. We are just regular, full-time, hard-working Malibu residents who don't want to feel like we need that kind of support to rebuild. I know it's just a parcel and an application to you, but I wanted to give you a little more history on our home and property. We bought it in 1997 when we were pregnant with our first child. It was and is our first and only home. In other words, is Marnie. Now Commissioner Cammons, thank you for accepting your appointment. So humbly stated in one of her public comments, there's no home in Aspen that we retreat to when Malibu starts burning down. This picture, I think that was 2005, that's on our driveway. The kids called that our house, Big Blue House. There was a show on Disney that was called Bear in the Big Blue House, and that's what they called it. We bought that house knowing it was a fixer-upper. Mike comes from a family of general contractors, so we weren't intimidated by all the work that needed to be done. We DIYed everything. Our kids grew up learning how to do it yourself. The next picture, Parker, that's us on our front porch. I think that was spring of 2010. We replaced those French doors. Next picture, that's us on our backyard, on our outside chess set that we designed and made. The kids mixed and poured that concrete. And in fact, there's just one piece from that chess set, a concrete slab, that we were able to salvage in Woolsey. Parker, I think that's the next picture. So we still have that. That's one of the only things we were able to save, because our foundation, everything else, just turned into like cookie dust. Last picture is us on our property. Really weird, Jack Spitzer, who's a professional photographer, was looking for Woolsey Fire victims to interview them and take pictures, and we just said, okay, fine. He walked down our driveway, and so that's how we have that picture. It was just a random. Anyhow, I know this project isn't personal to you, but it is to me. I'm the mom of those three kids who are now adults. They were 15, 19, and 20 when Woolsey hit. The older two, Sierra and Logan, have become active-duty Marines since their home burned down. It's the only home they've ever known, and when they return from their deployments, we are still technically homeless. So as a mom, I don't have that place where they can exhale after serving their country. I don't have that home or that kitchen to cook Thanksgiving or Christmas dinners in. Mike's also been deployed as a civilian contractor, on and off, for five years after Woolsey. Each time he came home, I wanted to tell him we were closer to starting construction, but I couldn't. So back to the relevant issues, our non-code compliant driveway has held up starting our rebuild because we need a safe driveway to access the build site, and the old one is too steep and too narrow. And then what you didn't, didn't see on our property from my photos is a fire hydrant that's located on the top of our driveway. We evacuated from Woolsey and all the other fires before that with this false sense of the security with that fire hydrant there, that thinking, you know, firefighters wouldn't let a house burn down right in front of them with the hydrant there. But of course, the irony of that is the firefighters couldn't come and the hydrant wasn't used, which is why we want the onsite water in the form of a container pool, which is part of our fire hardening plans. So please approve our project so we can finally start rebuilding our home. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And I know we have your other professional up there. I have one more disclosure in seeing the photo. I spent a lot of time in your house as a kid because my friends owned it, so I was intimately familiar with that beautiful property. That's it. The biologist on Zoom.
And Leslie, you're able to unmute your microphone at this time?
Yep, I'm right here. You guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Leslie Lazarati. I work for WRA. We're an environmental consulting firm, and we've been working with DNA and Mike at their property to make sure that the, the design is completed, being mindful of the local biological resources and the ESHAs. As noted in the staff report, there is a blue line stream on the property, and the Moors have made effort to locate all of their construction outside of the ESHA buffer. The rest of the site is currently vegetated with non-natives and castor bean and, you know, all of those things that come in when a site has been disturbed by a fire or such in these kinds of urbanized locations. So I just want to point out that this is a very mindful design, and it's cognizant of the LCP, LCP policies and ESHA buffers and, you know, creating and respecting the local environment.
All right, is that it? All right, let's reserve the rest of that time for rebuttal. Do we have any other public speakers on Zoom or?
Yes, one other speaker, Joe Drummond.
I am just so sad to see this, that it's taken this long for the Moors to rebuild, and I hope that you guys approve this without any real debate. It's just shameful that they haven't rebuilt yet, and it was devastating to see their loss. And I really feel for them, and I just hope you can approve this ASAP. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Dina, did you have any more comments to rebut anything that was said? Did you want to add anything else to the mic for the record? You don't have, you don't have to. You can just say that you want us to approve it. You can say whatever you want.
Well, I just, well, I didn't, I, you know, I'm learning in this process, like, I, I just wanted to thank you, Joe, out there. Thank you for that, and thank Melanie, who's here to support me, Dean Wenner also. People were texting, and they showed up, so, I mean, I appreciate that. Oh, and Haylen, too. Haylen's here. And anybody who's been supporting, I appreciate that, and thank you. That's all, I guess.
Thank you very much.
Just one question.
For her?
No.
For Tyler.
Tyler, what is a container pool?
Um, Dina probably know better than me, but I think it's just made out of a container, like a shipping container?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, like a prefab.
Prefab, okay, if there's no other...
It's modified with like concrete and everything inside. It's not just...
Oh, okay.
Are we opening the hearing or closing the?
We are closing the public hearing. Are you ready to chat?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm just trying to figure out how, the original driveway was 13 feet. How did we get to this? I mean, we're going to be looking, there are going to be a lot of fire rebuilds that have driveways that are much narrower than this, steeper than this. How, you know, I don't understand how this happened.
Yeah, it's because when the fire rebuild codes were written the first time around, we didn't have this experience to know of these issues. And unfortunately, the Moors, you know, the codes that were written did not account for steep slopes, it did not count for retaining wall height. In this LCPA application that we have before the Coastal Commission on Thursday, we do account for these issues. So they'll be able, if, I shouldn't say this specific application, because this requires an 18-foot retaining wall, which would still not be allowed, but without a variance, but the steep slope issue would go away, and someone would be able to develop up to a 12-foot retaining wall by right, essentially, as part of the rebuild. So in the future, for other fires...
Tyler, that's specifically to a driveway, correct?
For a driveway.
Correct.
Yeah, that's required by the fire department. So in the future, for, Palisades Fire has some different rules because the governor's order, but Rod Fire, Franklin Fire, those areas that are impacted are going to have these lesser standards to, to make it easier for them to get what they need.
And what was the date for that workshop? Or the amendment's already ready up at Coastal?
Yes, it's on Thursday.
Okay. And so this project would be a de minimis waiver in a week?
Not this project, like I said, because it requires 18-foot retaining walls, so it's pretty steep. But if, and we did look at alternatives for this one. It's just the steepness of canyon made this one even more challenging. And then they had the ESHA. We had, we couldn't do the step design because it would encroach into ESHA, and the LCP says to avoid ESHA variances before all other variances. So we, we worked with the alternatives for the Moors, and it resulted in this. This particular application, no, it would still require a variance, but this is kind of a unique situation. They have unique steep slopes, whereas other properties, in a large majority, the requirements that we potentially are going to adopt, it'll satisfy and, and make it easier.
Thank you.
Thank you. John?
I'd like to make a motion to approve as, as recommended.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Roll call.
I, I just want to say one thing before we do the roll call, just really quickly. I just want to, I just want to thank Dina for coming, for coming and sharing the whole story and for staying strong the whole way through and sticking with it to get your house back, and appreciate that.
I want to say one last thing, too. Also want to thank both you and Mike. You guys have done a great job of getting involved in Malibu's politics and our fresh voice, and I want to thank you guys for everything.
I'll thank you for standing up for your rights.
Let's vote. Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Chair P?
Yes.
Commissioner Cammons?
Yes.
Commissioner Riddick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I move adjourn in honor of our new planning commissioner.
Before we adjourn, I will remind you that tonight is an opportunity, if anyone wants to take advantage of it, for Planning Commission comments under 8A.
If we have consensus, I would, at some point, like to get an update on where we are at from our Woolsey Fire rebuilds.
We got it.
No, we got our update about the Palisades Fire.
We do maintain Woolsey Fire rebuild statistics online that are updated as projects...
Okay, so we're good with that?
That's a weekly update.
I, I understand that. I just think at some point, like, I'm not saying like right now, but like when we go to like start the year or something, hopefully, knock on wood that there's not a, you know, we don't have a catastrophic disaster, that we just make it a point, you know, to kind of be consistent with that stuff. And as you were tonight, like, that's very helpful. And I think that I just can't stress how appreciative I am of all of you guys. So, thank you. John?
I just want to note that it's 7:48 and we're done. And other nights where it's midnight. So I, I hope staff sees this and moves some items around so our meetings are more even in the future.
Staff is just going to note that you should not get the use to this early end time.
I know, but there, we've had several, and we've had several midnight ones lately, so we don't do well at midnight.
Are we done?
Anyway, we approved adjourning, right?
So we had consensus to adjourn of name of our new commissioner.
You're so fast.
There was really nothing to me.
I was ready. I had my coffee.